And we're on.
We're on?
Yes.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City of Glendale's Planning Commission meeting, February 18, 2015. May we please have a roll call?
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Here.
Landrigan.
Lee.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
And Yesaien.
Here.
May I please hear your report regarding the posting of the agenda, Ms. Stoller?
The agenda was posted on Wednesday, February 11, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and also on the city's website.
Thank you. And Commissioner Yesaien, we'll follow in our pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You? Approval of the minutes for January 21st, are there any changes or notations can we have an approval?
So move.
Second.
They're approved.
They're approved. We don't have any cards for oral communications. Is there anybody in this amidst you all here wanting to speak about anything else but an item on the agenda? Could be anything, the weather that we are having, the snow that they're having, and all of that. So seeing none, we'll move forward. Item number six on the agenda is zoning appeals. There is none on the new business, however, on their old business, we have item A, 326 Kempton Road. Who's doing your report on this thing?
I am doing the report. At your last meeting, you directed staff to return with a resolution to overturn Planning Hearing Officer's decision and provide a motion for approval with your findings and what has been included in your packet. And I just want to remind you that we do need, under our rules, we do need three affirmative votes to approve or make any changes actually on an appeal. And with that, that concludes my presentations unless you have any questions.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make the motion.
Please go ahead.
Upon consideration of the staff report, public testimony, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to the appeal of variance case number PVAR 1413-376-326 Kempton Road at a public hearing on January 21, 2015, the Planning Commission hereby reverses the Planning Hearing Officer's decision, makes the following findings, and adopts the attached conditions of approval, A through D and 1 through 8.
You have a second for that?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Yesaien.
Aye.
Chairperson Astorian.
Yes. Very good. So seeing nothing on their old business, we're going to move to new business. The location, this is item number A, location is 3067 Chevy Chase Drive. And I think Mr. Dong, or who is doing, yeah, Roderick Dong?
Yes, thank you Chairman Astorian and Commissioners. Good evening. The cases before you tonight is case number PSR ZDR 1421101, which is for the precise plan of design, basically SR development review, as well as a zone change proposal, case number PCC 1426485. As she stated, the project site is located at 3067 East Chevy Chase Drive, better known as Chevy Chase Country Club. The subject site is located within the SR zone, which is special recreation zone. Specifically, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment and SR development review to amend the zoning map from the SR zone to SR PPD, which is an overlay zone that represent the precise plans of design, and also to allow the development within the special recreation zone. Moreover, the project includes an expansion of 20,795 square feet to the existing clubhouse. The existing clubhouse is about 11,520 square feet. Also proposed is the reconfiguration of the two parking lots and parking spaces, as well as the expansion to the pool and deck, and new landscaping around the periphery of the building and the pool area. But also of note is the proposal to add four new tennis court that is located further north of the clubhouse, which is, which will be above the city-owned reservoir. So if you look at the drawings behind you, the area of the tennis court has been identified. That parcel is city-owned parcel, so an agreement is being worked out between the city and the Chevy Chase Country Club for the development of the tennis court in that area. So as part of the expansion of the country club, the applicant is proposing to include new uses, but more importantly, the project will be a continuation of the existing country club use. But however, the applicant is interested in also allowing schools and community teams to use the facilities, specifically the athletic facilities such as the golf course, swimming pool, as well as the proposed tennis courts. Also, the applicant is proposing to open the bar, restaurant, and banquet hall meeting rooms to the general public, as well as conducting wine tastings on a limited basis. Currently, the applicant is proposing a tasting event four times a year. And related to that, the alcohol, whatever item that will be provided, will be available for offsite, for purchase to be consumed offsite. So the existing property is approximately 34 acre in area and is composed of two parcels. This site was developed in 1927, but the building has gone through numerous modifications through the years. So a mitigated negative decoration was repaired, and the 20 days comment period started on February 4th and will end on February 24th. To date, we have not received any comments about the proposed mitigated neg-dag. The project came before the Design Review Board on January 29 of this year. So the DRB considered the project and determined that the site planning, mass and scale, building design, and detailing are appropriate, and provided a positive recommendation of the project design with comments. The record of decision from the Design Review Board, as well as the staff report, were provided in the commission's packet for your review. Six findings were required for the proposed zone change and zoning map amendments, amendment, which are contained in the proposed ordinance. We have provided you with a revised ordinance, and copies of this ordinance also are also available at the front door. In addition, the applicant, most precisely as related to the operation of the facility, in terms of hours of operation, the applicant has indicated that they would like to be open until 1:00 AM. So that request will be up to the commission to decide whether it will be appropriate in this case. So overall, if you like, I can go over each of the findings, but they are, again, contained in the proposed ordinance. Overall, staff recommends that the Planning Commission provide a positive recommendation to the City Council concerning the SR development review, precise plan of design, as well as the zone change and zoning map amendment. Thank you. The applicant team is here to elaborate on any questions of the project overall.
Thank you, Mr. Dong. Now, I have a card from Ralph Gentile. Did I pronounce your name? It's not? Okay, very good. So you are the architect for the project, or?
I am.
Your team is architect, okay. So please proceed, and we will have 15 minutes for you. So that's why I didn't have your name.
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Simonian and Mr. Gentile.
Also, before Mr. Simonian start, Chairman Astorian, we received a petition of support for the project, as well as a letter of support from the Chevy Chase Estate Association, which have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you do need to open the public hearing, and I would also just note for the Commissioner's pleasure that Mr. Platt, our urban designer, is here if he wants any advice on the design review of the project.
So if you insist, now we will open the public hearing. Mr. Simonian, you have 15, your team has got 15 minutes.
Good evening, Chairperson Astorian and Planning Commissioners. I'm Mark Simonian, I'm with Metro Investments. I'd like to start off by thanking Mr. Hagani, Mr. Timfoy, and Rather, and the entire planning staff. We've been working with them for 15 months, and it's been an utmost pleasure, and we've received a tremendous amount of support, and we very much appreciate that. And I wanted to start off by saying thank you. This couldn't have happened without the support of staff. Wanted to take this opportunity to quickly give you a background on the Chevy Chase Country Club. The golf course has been around since the 1920s. The club was previously burned down at some point in time, and of course, it's gone through several renovations in the years. Numerous ownerships have taken place over the last decade or so, and currently, the current ownership took over some 20 months ago. They've maintained the property as well as they could. Their intent is to renovate and to expand the country club for future generations to use the club as a country club. It's important to point out that the club is currently dying. It has some 55 members, which fluctuates every month up or down. It's falling apart in every which way. It has no tennis courts. It has an obsolete layout and size, and so it's not suitable for contemporary corporate events, or even contemporary social events to take place at. It has no proper dining area. And the owners still continue to spend some $16,000 a month on the water bill. In short, without sufficient number of members, the club cannot stay afloat. The intent is to expand it to create an economically viable country club. Now we have the opportunity to rebuild the country club, to make sure it thrives in the 21st century, to return the country club to its glory days where it was the community center of the Chevy Chase Canyon. This evening's presentation is a result of 15 months of direct collaboration with staff and the Chevy Chase community. We knew that in order to have a successful project, a perfect win-win scenario had to be achieved, and I am delighted to stand here and let you know that we do have the support of the Chevy Chase Estates Association, as staff has stated, and also some other members of the community as well. We are here this evening to request a zoning map amendment from the SR zone to the PPD overlay zone. You may ask why the PPD overlay zone, the Chevy Chase Country Club offers and utilizes many land uses that do not meet the current allowable uses in the SR zone. A zoning map amendment from the SR zone to the PPD overlay zone must be requested to accommodate this very special scenario. The PPD will allow for the current and for the existing uses, such as restaurant use, such as bar use, such as the meeting rooms that the Chevy Chase Country Club currently has and currently utilizes to remain and also to be expanded upon. Without the PPD zoning map amendment, the club cannot expand the legal nonconforming uses that it currently utilizes. The subject property is an appropriate use of the PPD overlay zone. It does not fit into any other zoning category. The PPD was conceived for these type of special scenarios. Last October, the project was unveiled to the Chevy Chase community. We had some 60 people in attendance. We presented the project to the community at the country club. The Estates Association was there, the surrounding neighbors were there. The project was well-received and praised. Of course, there were some comments that we got back, some ideas and feedback, which we have implemented into the project. It is very important for us to consult with and integrate the community into the design process very early, and that is what we have done. The project is a true collaboration. Most importantly, it will ensure that the Chevy Chase Country Club remains as a country club in the Chevy Chase Canyon for future generations, as I indicated earlier. It's no longer is a viable club, as I indicated. It doesn't have tennis courts, and we're proposing four new tennis courts on top of the water reservoir. Currently, the Glendale Water and Power has CCNRs, an agreement in the form of CCNRs between the Glendale Water and Power and the Chevy Chase Country Club. The CCNRs include golf club use and golf course use. We're amending those to also include tennis court use as well. So in order to bring the project to fruition, we brought in many consultants very early, and they're here this evening. A traffic consultant was brought in. We had numerous meetings with Transportation Department. A trip generation report, along with a traffic impact report, has been already approved by Mr. Wayne Coe from the Transportation Department. And John Bagdanyan is here to answer any questions that you may have on that topic, but it was something that we spent about six months on, and we just got it approved some months ago. Although the architect and staff all agreed that the building or the country club did not have any historical significance, we voluntarily hired a historical consultant, and a report was generated and verified that fact that there's no historic significance to the building nor to the country club itself. We've hired an MND consultant, which they've assisted us with that report. We've hired civil engineers. We've hired a landscape architect, Judy Palmer, who's here this evening. Last but not least, as you will hear, Ralph Gentile has been hired as an architect who specializes in resort and hospitality design. It's really important for this expansion to create an economically viable club. The intent is to have really three types of memberships. We have a social membership, where they come in for the restaurant and other amenities. We're going to have a summer membership, where these folks come in between May and September, and they use the pool facility, the tennis facility, the gym, et cetera. And then you have a full-fledged membership for the golf players, and also they could use the entire club if they choose. The proposed expansion will ensure that the adequate amenities to accommodate the needs of the contemporary, contemporary club member. That's very important. It was built in the 20s. Hundred years has almost gone by, and so we need to make sure it could accommodate these new needs. Country clubs are used differently today than they were back then. They're more of a community center. It's more of a place you go with the family. As staff illustrated, all the project details have been worked out. With your recommendation, we could hopefully move forward. I'd like to just point out two things, which I heard earlier from staff's presentation. The public use portion of it is going to be the restaurant and the bar. We're going to keep that open. But the rest of the club are member-only, so that's one clarification I'd like to make. The second is that right now, the club closes at midnight. We're okay with the club's closing at midnight. We were proposing to perhaps close at 1:00 on Friday or Saturday night. If that is a concern, that we could, of course, go back to the midnight on Fridays and Saturday nights as well. But again, we're trying to give it as much flexibility as possible. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ralph Gentile, the architect. Thank you very much. Unless you have questions for me, I could stick around. If not, we'll have Ralph.
Can you repeat that last part, the hours?
Yes.
The closing of hours and what you plan to change?
Currently, the club closes at midnight. Every night is what's allowed. Now, if you go there during the week, they usually close around 3:00, because there's nothing happening. The restaurant doesn't really function, and afternoons, no one goes there. Unless in the summer months, then it's active until about 7:30 or 8:00, until sun goes down. So we'd like to, of course, keep it open until midnight for sure in the weekends. However, if the board believes it's a good idea, if the Commissioners believe it's a good idea, and there's support, we'd like to go to 1:00 Fridays and Saturday nights for the events. And this is only in the indoor portion. This does not include the outdoor portion or anything like that.
Any other questions for Mr. Simonian? I have a question for you, since you brought up the membership, I think I'll follow in that, just that. Years ago, at least, and I may be not totally, I don't know about the veracity of what I'm going to say. A lot of the homes that were sold or built had a membership running with the land in the Chevy Chase Canyon golf course and so forth. Is that, have you come across that? Have you had any issues with folks that own homes that maybe have title, on their title they have?
I'm unaware of that.
Okay.
And it'd be very interesting to look into. We could look into that. I'm unaware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gentile.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you very much to staff. Oh, did I?
For that intro, right?
Well, I'm practicing for Sunday night, sorry. I'm going to focus primarily on the architectural point of the project, since that is my role. And then, as I mentioned, we have a fabulous team. We have a very good landscape architect who knows the area very well and has assisted us in careful design. Country club, of course, really is an intersection between nature and a social world. We have a wonderful parking consultant, who's really spent a lot of extra time trying to figure out how this club can operate profitably and be with the least amount of impact on the transportation infrastructure. And also a civil engineer, who's been very careful in helping us minimize the amount of cut-and-fill that we have to do and regrading. And some of these elements came up before the DRB, but I wanted to just mention very quickly. One of them is our overall goal of this project is not to expand the club for the sake of expanding the club. Our goal in the end would be to make this club feel like it's always been this gracious, lovely Spanish revival, that three or four years from now, a club member or visitor from out of town might walk through and say, oh, it's always been this lovely place. The people who are currently our members, as well as the people that live in the canyon who are not our members, remember when the club was not the jewel in the crown of Chevy Chase Canyon. It was rundown. It was not in great shape. And matter of fact, the Homos Association was actually formed at one point when the club went bankrupt, and Security Pacific National Bank wanted to cut up the property that the club is on and sell it as home lots. So the HOA, who supports us very strongly, has a vested interest in this big green open space at the heart of the canyon, and to make it, again, the cultural center that they deserve. The other thing that I'd like to say is that the club is also opening a new era of diversity. So just like clubs in the past, maybe we're very narrow in the kinds of members that they had in the particular club, either by choice or by club rules, this particular group is very, very open in making this a very diverse club. And some of the incidental steps that they've taken toward that are in the involvement of the social membership in relationship to the swim teams and competing against other clubs in a kind of intermural way. The other thing, very recently, we saw some of the private pro-school, club, sorry, golf course, golf teams practicing with our pro on the course. So these are the kinds of things that, as an architect and as a person of the community, I'm very happy to see this new chapter. So it's not only a chapter in the physical nature of the club, which I'm happy to answer any questions on that, but it's also a new chapter in how this club can behave for the community. My experiences with my clients have been very, very strong, and they have a big commitment in my conversations with Nick and Vatche and Stephen. It's always been, we've been very successful in the businesses that we're currently in, and we're used to being successful. So we want this to be a success, and it makes a lot of sense to me. So without taking any more of your time, are there any questions that I can answer for you guys?
Any questions for Mr. Gentile? None, thank you, sir. You may be seated. I'm going to go to folks that have filled out the cards and want to have a say in the matter as well. So may I please have Ms. Annie Reed? And you have five minutes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Annie Reed, and my husband and I have lived around the corner on Golf Club Drive since 2003. And I'm here today to publicly voice my concerns surrounding the planned expansion of the Chevy Chase Country Club. I have read the over 400 pages of the report, and while most of the aesthetic improvements appear to be acceptable, there is, however, a significant deficiency in the report, and that is the issue of noise and the lack of any planning for noise abatement. Specifically, under the project description, the proposed project hours in that report for meeting space say 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM, not 1:00 AM. Under section L, under noise, the analysis for exposure to noise levels are about 90% less than or analyzed to have no impact. This analysis is inaccurate to the point of absurdity. The report states that the expansion would slightly increase noise levels, and that is far from the truth. We live in a canyon where low-level noise from simple conversations can be heard blocks away, as if the people were right next door or in the same room. And for over 10 years, my husband and I have lived with the country club's after-hour parties, where the noise level is so elevated that pounding vibrations from the music can be felt, like this, inside of your house, nonstop. Nonstop, where guests turn up the volume, and it doesn't matter if it's live music or DJ music, it doesn't matter. The noise levels interfere with the quiet enjoyment of our property and are detrimental. And sadly, the noise doesn't stop at closing time. Partygoers trickle through the neighborhood, continuing their party-like behaviors, loitering, leaving behind litter, food, used condoms, and glass bottles. And who cleans that up? Not the country club, we do. There is no one at the club to call, no onsite security, no management company, no contact number whatsoever. Our only resort is to call the Glendale Police, and we have done that every time. The report speaks nothing of soundproofing, only of insulation, which is unacceptable, especially when the expansion will double the meeting space capacity, congestion, traffic, the people on Chevy Chase Golf Club Drive and Parway. After-hour operations should close at 10:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, until midnight on Friday and Saturday, and only until 9:00 PM on Sunday. Legal requirements should mandate private security be hired for all after-club activities, which the club can certainly offset to those who are booking those events. The club is not set in an industrial or commercial area where other such San Fernando Valley party halls or banquet halls are located. It is, however, set in a beautiful, as you can see, serene, single-family residential area where working adults, young children, and senior citizens live. The Chevy Chase Homeowners Association is a private group and do not represent the views of the entire neighborhood and/or the entire property owners. On February 4th, I wrote to the Glendale News Press, which was published on February 4th in the newsbag, and the editor named it "Club's Expansion Needs Some Tweaks," and it certainly does, in my opinion, and the opinion of those also who are going to speak for you tonight to tell their concerns. So I would like to thank you for your time, and really, really, really hope that you take all of our concerns very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Randy Wood.
My name is Randy Wood. I live at 3001 Edmonton Road. I've lived there for almost 25 years. I've seen a lot of things come and go at the country club. It really is a jewel. I have some friends that come in from Orange County. They can't believe something like this even exists in Los Angeles County anymore. So it is a real jewel. Our main concern is traffic. I've lived there, like I said, 25 years. I've seen a lot of bad things happen on Chevy Chase Drive, a lot of traffic, and now we've got even more cars coming up and down, traffic on Chevy Chase Canyon and Chevy Chase Drive. The hours of operation, that's another concern. Last call at 2:00 in the morning. Something like that is, belongs on Bran Boulevard in Glen Oaks, not in the Chevy Chase Canyon. I mean, it's good for the. to be some, some things to control the traffic and the hours of operation. And one last thing that my mother always told me, nothing ever good happens after midnight.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mary Ann Wood?
Uh, I'm the other half and, uh, my name is Mary Ann. We've been here for 25 years. Uh, my concern is the hours. It's, uh, one thing, at first it was 2:00 AM and now it's 1:00 AM and then it's midnight. Um, I guess midnight on the weekends would be acceptable, but, um, not outside, uh, for sure. We live right up the street from there, maybe, hmm, six or seven houses and it is a canyon and all the noise comes up and whenever there's an event, you get no sleep until the wee hours. Um, and it does greatly affect our serenity in the, I'm sure for many people around the Uh, so I'm concerned about that and I really am concerned about all those cars coming on that one stop sign. Thank God for the stop sign, but, um, but all those cars coming at the same time for a big event, I, I, I just don't see how that's gonna work out. And I would like to see security there if they are gonna have an event in the evening. I don't want this to turn out like the Rusty Pelican where it was a restaurant and then it turned into a banquet hall and then the police were called and all the neighbors are upset and they finally got rid of them after many, many complaints. I don't want to see this happening to this and that's where I see it going. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dennis Reed?
Good evening.
Evening.
Uh, I think like most of my neighbors, uh, I want to see a viable enterprise, uh, in that facility because the last thing we would wanna see is a dilapidated, abandoned building there. So we, it's not that we really are opposing the project, we just have specific concerns about a few things, as you've already heard. Um, I'm gonna focus on the entry and exit part because I think for me, that's the, one of the worst, um, aspects of this. So, uh, in looking through the report myself, I did look at, I'm speaking about the area where Chevy Chase Drive, where Golf Club comes off, there's a hard turn right there at the entry to the club. It's depicted up there in, in one of the maps. Um, that is a very narrow, now, it's actually, the, uh, report which I looked at has a photograph of that area, which is very deceiving. I'm sure it's deceiving intentionally and I hope you won't full, fall for the trick. It's the old realtor's trick of photographing it with a wide-angle lens so it looks like it's spacious, when in fact, that roadway is very narrow. Narrow to the point that, and that turn is so sharp, right at the entry of the club, that when I come up the other direction, I almost stop because I would say eight out of 10 times, cars come in the other direction, come over that medium divider, that, the yellow line. And I've been hit nearly three or four, five, six times at least. Um, imagine, I mean, we heard about, with all the expansion, we heard about all the increased activities that are going to be available at this club. Not, not just additional new members, which Ward knows the club needs, they're right about that. Um, all of the expansion of the athletic facilities, school, school buses, if schools are involved, school buses are gonna be coming in that entryway. It's ju, it's too narrow now. It really is a bit of a ha, hazard now. If you add all that additional traffic, I, I'm really, it boggles my mind that your traffic expert didn't see this as a big issue. And there's an easy solution, I'm not saying it's a cost-free solution, but there is lots of club property to add at least a lane, if not two lanes, to that entry. Um, I don't know if we're seeing the area right there, yeah, but that's not, I don't think that's what I'm talking about exactly, but, um, yeah, it's just a, it's just a two-lane road, you can't really appreciate how sharp that bend right is, just as the entry is right there. Yeah, it's, any picture of this, um, is likely to look much more spacious than it truly is. I would urge you, the planning commission, to go out and actually stay, spend a few minutes and watch cars go around that corner. Watch how they narrowly miss often, it's way too narrow. But if, but if you, if you put one more lane with, two would be better, of course, and you could just go that direction into the country club area, the, the land is there to do it. It'd be quite easy to make that, uh, just generally better for the neighborhood, uh, as it is now, let alone with all the additional traffic these mini-activities and expansion will bring. Uh, I do, um, I don't know how much longer I have, but I do wanna just echo the comments about the noise. Uh, we do, it's that, we're only, we're a block away, uh, so we get a lot of noise. I would point out that the homeowners association, most of the people in that association do not live adjacent to the club. So naturally, they're not gonna have the same cur, concerns that we who live adjacent to the club have. So keep that in mind, that endorsement is kind of hollow, frankly. Um, I, I think those are the two main issues. Uh, the time, I, going past midnight does not make sense in a residential area to me too, but I think that entry and exit, um, concern is my major concern. Thank you for listening, I hope you will explore it.
Thank you. Brian Duran?
My name's Brian Duran, I live on Graceland Way in Glendale, which is in Chevy Chase Estates, um, about a block and a half from the club. I'm used to hearing the noise from the club. When I bought my house, the realtor told me that the club had activities in the evening. Hasn't bothered us, but I can imagine it would bother other people who are closer. And, uh, I've heard from our landscape architect on this project that that, there was gonna be some kind of amelioration for that. Other than that, I should mention that I did supply a packet that should, a letter that should be in your packet that states our position on this and in which we recommend approval of the club, club's renovation. In that letter, it describes the broad community support that we have seen, the trusting relationship that we've established with club owners who we think are responsive to the community needs, and it also states our understanding and support of the use of the PPD overlay zone for this project. I'd like to offer an additional perspective from canyon residents that should be considered. Canyon residents, of course, look forward to a new and improved club, but it's important to note what the canyon residents do not want to see should the club fail. There's a possibility of rezoning, which would allow many single residential units or, worse, condominium projects to come into the canyon, which would add to the population density in the canyon. There would be increased traffic. And of course, there would be the loss of what we think is the lovely centerpiece of the Chevy Chase Canyon, the Chevy Chase Country Club. We believe this proposal is an outstanding, long-awaited opportunity that would not only update, uh, facility to 21st century standards and that would thus enhance the possibility of success of the ownership. It would also raise property values in the surrounding area and it would also provide the city with a greatly enhanced City of Glendale amenity. As you may know, the CCA appears typically at these hearings to object to new developments. We favor responsible, reasonable development in the canyon. Because this proposal is a win for everybody, we wholeheartedly support it and encourage your recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. Uh, Mr. Simonian, you have a five-minute, uh, customary rebuttal time if you wanna address anyone, any, any one of the, uh, concerns from some of the folks here. If not, you don't have to. I can easily close the public hearing.
I know, I just wanted to verify something. I know there were some club members that wanted to speak in favor that perhaps have not filled out a card, so I'm wondering if you could just make a general, um, um...
Still need to fill it out.
Correct, that people could come up and, and fill out a card afterward.
They need to, to fill out cards and we have cards out there, right?
I realize that, but I'm wondering if, um, if you could just make an announcement, if there's anybody else that wants to speak before I do my rebuttal.
We, uh, Mr. Stoffler did that and, uh, is there anyone, let me make the announcement more official. Is there anyone here that wants to?
Thank you.
Speak or forever, you know what? Okay, so there's two of you. I will allow the both of you, each of you speak, but you need to fill out the card so we can have it for record. Why don't I start with you, sir? Would you please make sure that you fill out a card, one of these pink cards and give it to me right after you're done?
I will. Good evening. My name is Dave Higgins. I live directly across the street from the parking lot of the country club on Parway Drive at 1539. Um, I have heard music, um, it has gone into midnight, um, but I, like everybody else, I assume that bought their house before 1925, knew that a country club, um, neighborhood included social events. Parking has never been an issue for me. If there was ever any overflow parking, my house or my neighbor would be the first one they would park in front of. There's been one occasion, and it was a corporate event during the afternoon, that there was overflow parking on Parway Drive. And like I said, that was in the afternoon. I've never seen a beer bottle, a condom, or any overflow of, uh, party goers, um, in my neighborhood. They park on the east side of the country club in that lot, um, and I've never had issues with traffic or people in the neighborhood, um, either before or after the events there. Um, I look at it, I bought that house knowing that was there. I hear the music, the music is actually better than most of the music coming from the parties in the canyon because it's, like, it was brought up before, the noise does travel. The music is more tasteful, um, and there is in fact, people you can call. Um, the owners have been very receptive. They provided phone numbers for both myself and my neighbor, I have never called. Um, I don't know whether or not my neighbors have, but, uh, they've been receptive to the community and made themselves available to, uh, to handle complaints that come through. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don't forget to fill out the card for our record. The gentleman...
It's a pink card.
It's the pink card right over there.
I'll move it back there. Hi, my name is Dick Greenwood and, uh, we live at, uh, 3163 Charing Cross Place, which is, um, just, uh, across from the, uh, the golf course across Chevy Chase and, and we live above, if you will, the, the, the country club, um, golf course and overlook that. And the, we went through three and, um, two and a half years of construct, reconstruction of the reservoir and intimately know how noise travels up, uh, into, uh, our house and, uh, and makes, you know, makes like pretty unbearable. Now those tennis courts are there and I didn't, you know, it may be my, my issue that I didn't see anything about it, but hours of operation for the tennis courts, uh, noise abatement related to the people that are using those, that will travel just as easily as the construction noise. And so I'm really concerned about the hours of operation and access to those and, um, that they don't become, you know, an attractive nuisance as well because that's, over the years, has been a little bit of a problem is, is, um, you know, people going onto the golf course in the evening and night and unauthorized, you know, access. Uh, there's also a parking lot for the pump station there and it's very, gonna be very more convenient to the tennis courts than, than the, uh, accessing them from the country club. So I suspect that, you know, there could be, uh, issues about, um, people trying to park there to access the, you know, tennis courts and things like that. So I, I would just ask you to take a, a hard look at, um, the, um, the, what restrictions are gonna be around the tennis courts and their use and the time of day they can be used and, and what they're doing for noise abatement. And they also destroy the, a, a part of the, um, the, uh, natural area or the open area. So they're gonna, they are, you know, in that sense, you know, an issue to us as well because, uh, you know, when, when we bought that property, we enjoyed a great view, um, and, uh, of open space and, and that's gonna be, uh, taking up a big percentage of, of that from, from that perspective, so.
You're referring to the tennis courts, sir, right?
Tennis courts, yes. I know there just hasn't been, mostly just, I mean, I have a similar complaint about the country club and the noise and, and the hours of, of operation there. Uh, I, I think, you know, midnight on the weekends is fine, but anything past that, I think is problematic, um, because again, that noise carries all the way up to where we are as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. And, and I'm, one last comment, we, we are not against the, the, the overall, uh, development of the country club. I mean, we, we think that's, you know, healthy for the, for the canyon, we just would like to see these issues addressed.
Thank you. May I have your card, please? Thank you. Mr. Bill?
Clifton.
Clifton.
Not Clinton. I get that a lot. I'll be real quick and, uh, overall, I, you know, I live at 1624 Golf Club Drive, just up from the country club. And, uh, I too would like to see it preserved. Um, and as a nine-hole golf course, it's gonna be hard to really build the membership, you know, you really need 18. So I think some of the ideas that are being presented and, and the expansion of the clubhouse have a lot of merit and, uh, you know, I'm thinking in the right direction. But I'm concerned about traffic and the parking because when I read the report, I could see that, uh, with special events, the parking lots has expanded, plus valet parking on the fourth fairway could be almost 400 cars. And, uh, where are they gonna all get out at the same time if an event is leaving? I don't care if it's midnight or even earlier, hopefully, but let's say it's something that gets over in the afternoon and those of us who live above there, that's our only way out too. And I don't really wanna be, I mean, you know, we all live in LA, you know what traffic is like. It's kinda nice to at least be able to get out of your house and onto the main street without sitting in a big line of cars at a stop sign. So I'm hoping that you could come up with some mitigation and thinking about this, perhaps when there are events where there is valet parking, uh, used, perhaps there could be a temporary exit added right onto Chevy Chase and there could be an off-duty officer there to assist with traffic so that, uh, you know, we can, we can try to address that. I know the noise, um, from parties and stuff is gonna be there and, you know, I'd like to keep that as early as, as reasonably possible to conclude those things, but, um, the main concern is just eagerness and ingress when there's a large event that has possibly hundreds of cars. And thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Mrs. Simonian, your five minutes.
Well, um, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and, and bringing up these important facts so we could actually have an opportunity to go through them.
Just, just a second, yes, sir.
Yeah, Mrs. Simonian, before you start, I just wanna, because I, I know you need all this, you know, your minutes to rebut some of these concerns that?
Sure.
Has been brought up. Uh, the concerns that you heard tonight?
Mm-hmm.
For last 15 months you've been working on this case, have you heard these complaints before? And, and if you did, hopefully you have some mitigating measures?
We do, we do. Um, you know, to, to start off, when we had our October meeting, like I said, there were 60-plus members of the community there. Um, I don't recall seeing the individuals in opposition.
I haven't called and noticed.
And, um, I know we went really out of our way to try to tell people about it. Now that said, they didn't know about it, they didn't come to some of this we're hearing now. Others, I know I've heard or I've read through the news press where they, Ms. Reed has sent articles, you know, trying to engage city council into kinda responding to her. So that's when I found out about some of these. To, to kinda answer your question, Commissioner Lee, you know, I think you've been copied on some 77, um, support names that live in the Chevy Chase Canyon. These aren't just members of the, you know, club, these are actual, you know, Chevy Chase Canyon residents that were in support. We had a lot more supporters that came out for DRB, I think they figured, "Oh, it's done" and so they didn't really show up this evening, which is somewhat unfortunate. As far as the noise abatement is concerned, right now, they're, the air conditioning systems, air conditioning systems do not work at the country club. So what they do is they open up the doors and they have some ceiling fans and it's natural ventilation and that's the way they cool the place down, which of course is what's causing the problem with the noise. This, this noise just travels through the canyon. What we've done is actually created, um, non-operable windows on the west side where the, both meeting rooms that face the west side have non-operable windows. In addition, all the entrances to the meeting rooms have vestibules, so you go through one vest, one door, the door shuts behind you, it's an airtight, airtight system, then you go through the second door to prevent noise from coming out. Of course, the air conditioning systems are gonna be working, the windows are gonna be non-operable in the, uh, meeting rooms, noise is gonna be tremendously reduced on that end. As far as the hours of operation is concerned, it's very simple. For the tennis courts, we basically decided not to put in any lights and so operation is gonna be sunup to sundown, period. We do not wanna put lights there, we do not want people from above the canyon looking down into these lights. Insofar as the uses are concerned, um, golf course, it's simple, sunup to sundown, that's the way the golf course works. Um, the pool operation goes till 7:00 PM through the months, uh, well, it's mostly summer to, to September and May or so, it even shuts down before that because it gets dark earlier. Um, any outdoor event is shutting down at 10:00 around the pool and any event inside, we've already said, we're okay with midnight. already said we're okay with midnight, which is already what is the case today. That's what Oakmont has midnight cut off. I believe La Cañada has as well. We have it as well, so we're not asking for anything more or less. It might make sense to go on a Friday or Saturday night, but again, if that's what is really resonating back and forth from the immediate people that live next door, then midnight it is. Insofar as the public portion is concerned, as a sign of gesture, as a nice gesture, the ownership has opened up the golf course to the Sacred Heart Golfers. It's a high school team. So they come with vans. They don't, this is, when people are golfing, it's not like 60 people are showing up, it's a small team, and so they typically show up in vans. The idea is then, of course, to have a swim team as well for the pool area, and that's what that public portion is, is for kids to enjoy it and to learn how to golf, et cetera. The DRB hearing, there were some parents that came out and said their kids learned how to golf on this course and that got scholarships out of it. So it is a great asset that we have, and we should encourage it. As far as the parking is concerned, John O. is here, our parking consultant. I think he could answer those questions more in detail, but we looked at it on an hour-by-hour basis. We obtained parking ratios from Wayne Co. and the planning staff for each one of the uses, computed what those uses are for the restaurant, what the parking requirements are for, let's say, restaurant, meeting one, meeting two, et cetera. We looked at their hours of operation, and with that graph, we knew exactly what our parking requirements were at any given point in time in the winter or in the summer and at any given point of the day. And so it all works, the numbers do work, and we kept the expansion under that square footage, so we didn't trigger additional parking. As far as the net trip additions are concerned, even including the construction parking, Wayne Co. and our parking consultant have basically come up with a report that was approved with the transportation department where there's less than 50 net new additions in the peak A.M. and peak P.M. hours. And so we have a club that exists. We want to expand the club to make it viable. We all know that the alternative is not a good alternative, and we, I think, are happy that, and we should be encouraging it because we have ownership that is willing to spend the kind of money it takes to keep this a viable country club moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Simoni?
Yeah, I am.
Yes.
Up to you.
The security, some people brought up security issues, especially at nighttime. What is your protocol for that?
I know moving forward, there's going to be a lot more staff involved, including security at the site. There is going to be an event coordinator. There is going to be certain individuals besides the chef that are going to be there doing events. And of course, there's going to be security moving forward at all the events in the evenings. And so I don't know if a security guard is necessary on a Wednesday night when, let's say, the Chevy Chase Estates Association is meeting there or if there's some sort of a, you know, low maintenance event going on. However, if it's a Christmas party, let's say, in December and Home Depot is, let's say, having their Christmas party there, yes, it would make sense absolutely to have a security guard there, and we are going to have that.
And then, and I was fortunate to get a tour of the property on Monday, and one thing I learned was to reduce noise, the way the development is proposed is to face a courtyard in the middle?
Correct.
Can you elaborate on that so people?
Yes, I'm glad you're bringing that up.
People know about it?
From the very initial stages, staff recommended that we expand the building around an existing courtyard. The idea was to create the wing, which is the west wing, and to basically create an interior courtyard around the pool where noise will not resonate out and won't be buffered by the building. And so that was one of the main site planning concerns from the get-go. And so we've come up with an architectural solution where it's, to the best of our abilities, we're buffering it via a building, but then we're going further and saying we're not going to have operable windows, and on top of that, we've putting vestibules to prevent secondary noise from coming out as one enters and exits the building.
Yeah, because it seems like it's all facing east.
Correct.
Or it's sort of facing into this courtyard.
To its interior courtyard, and that was the intent.
Yeah.
Thank you, Seuss.
And then, I guess, the loitering issues, that's something that obviously the club's going to be making sure they're...
It's an interesting question. I mean, I have family members that live in Cascadia in the Chevy Chase Canyon, which is a dark corner, and we find all those items that were talked about...
Yeah, it may not necessarily be people come to the...
It's what happens. It's a dark canyon, people go there, and they have a good time. Now, I don't think the country club members are the type of people that are going to be throwing used condoms out on the street and throwing their beer cans around. I think it's just some other demographic groups within, maybe younger children, kids, high school kids or whatever that are doing that. I don't really, I find it hard to believe that it's, you know, the members of the club.
Commissioner Jay.
Yeah. Commissioner Seuss has addressed one of the concerns that came up, so I'm going to get to the other part, which is the, I think, is a legit concern, and that is ingress and egress out of the club. And it is a sharp turn. I mean, I experienced that when I entered the club previous occasions, including Monday visit. And has, have you addressed that before, or have you spoken to our city people about maybe creating that extra, you know, lane for people to enter and, you know, enter into the club, you know, having the dedicated lane? Is there room for that? Is there hardship associated with that? What is the possibility of, have you looked at into that?
We have. Two things have come up after a lot of discussions, and I'd also like to have our parking consultant chime in on this as well. One is across the street from us is a debris basin. I think it's county-owned. And so, and part of it, part of that narrow street that was depicted in the picture, in fact, right there, is almost like a bridge that goes over that debris basin. And so we're physically limited with what could be done across the street as far as what county's willing to do and what sort of requirements we would have to go through to wind it on the county side. So then the hardship falls on the country club side. The club was built in the '20s. At that point in time, the canyon had narrow streets. It still has narrow streets. I walk, I live in the canyon, and when I walk in the canyon, it is dangerous, especially when I walk with my kids, you know, and they're in strollers. It's very dangerous. They're narrow. It's just how the canyon is. As far as our ability, we have a nine-hole golf course, which is already so compact. And so if we were to shift everything and provide that kind of a turn lane, it would not only totally disrupt, you know, hole number four, but it would absolutely disrupt the eastern parking lot as well and the western parking lot. It would basically then get in the way of the putting greens where the golfers start from. So the entire course would have to be almost redesigned. And so it didn't make any kind of sense to do that. And so what we did is we said, okay, let's work with the parking that we have, and what can we expand the project to reasonably, where we're not going over the parking requirements and where we're not going over the trip generation in the maximum peak A.M. and P.M. hours, and let's do a more moderate expansion, which is where we ended up. At one point, it was much bigger, and we kind of scaled it back to make it work with what we got. That's how we've addressed it.
Any other questions for Mrs. Simoni?
Yes. We talked about security for events, and you were agreeable to having them. As a matter of fact, I think you said that it's only natural that we would have security for a certain size.
And it's been discussed with the ownership, and they're okay with it.
Sure. But, and, you know, it's, I'm just doing my job. When I'm looking at the conditions that we will be voting on when it comes to it, that is not one of them.
We can add that.
Yes. Would you be agreeable to...
Absolutely, yeah. We've verbally agreed to it. We've talked about it.
I understand that. It just has to be documented, and I would prefer that.
Uh huh. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Bagdani.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, John Bagdani and J.B. Associates. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Bagdani, the couple of issues in regards to traffic has come up. Number one, there was conversation or questions or suggestions about traffic control in the, you know, right after the events or prior events, prior to events, which leads me to, well, it's naturally to the queuing of the cars, which was brought up by some of the speakers. And also, there was some, a topic was broached on as a temporary exit to Chevy Chase. The first two, I'm positive that there's got to be good mitigating methods, but the third one, I don't know if you've looked into it, and if you have, could you please elaborate on it?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, if I may, so that you get an order of magnitude, the number of trips that could, worst-case scenario, let's say if the banquet facility is in operation, which will be after, essentially after 8:00 P.M., it could generate at its max about 130. It has a requirement for 130 vehicles. If 130 people will come in at 2.4 or 2.3 cars, passengers per car. So you're still looking at about 110 to 120 vehicles coming into the Chevy Chase Country Club at 8:00 P.M. They will not all be coming at the same time, depending on the type of the event. You can spread it over a period of about an hour generally when you have a banquet of some sort or a wedding of some sort that that happens. You know, maybe two cars every minute that they will be arriving at the Chevy Chase and at the country club intersection, which is controlled by a three-way stop. That was installed a couple of years ago so that because of some of the events or access from country club onto Chevy Chase. So that's what you're looking at. The trip generation also shows that during the peak hours of the day, during the A.M. and the P.M. peak hour, at the P.M. peak hour, you're generating about 30 trips. That's the peak hour where the country club will have various uses. That would be the maximum. It's based on our trip generation factor that city approves. So that would be the extent of it. As far as a valet operation that we're recommending, because at some point, if you have everything on a hot summer day where you have the pool and all the facilities are rented, you have a PGA tournament, for example, going at the same time, the peak hour occurs somewhere between 2:00 P.M., 2:00 to 3:00 P.M., where you have a PGA tournament. Everything else is going on at the same time. So, again, it's, people are coming in and leaving the facility at randomly. The intersection of country club and Chevy Chase should be able to handle that. You have intersections further down to the south that are handling much higher volume on Chevy Chase at a four-way or a three-way intersection. Notwithstanding that, that should still be safe, so if there's a valet operator that is managing the valet operation during those hours, that can be designed so that you will make sure that access into the, entering the facility, exiting of the facility, it can be accommodated, so make sure it's orderly, it's safe. And many valet operations do that as part of their contract. We are recommending as part of the project that we submit a valet plan for approval by the public works department if and when the project gets approved. So it will spell out exactly the hours of operation, where they would valet the cars, and how would they valet the cars. So those are all the things that we've addressed as part of the parking analysis, as Mr. Simoni had mentioned. During the time where there is an event where the excess parking, the grassy area, needs to be used, again, that will be also operated by the valet operation, and only we're talking about adding another 85. Somebody mentioned like 400 cars. You don't need 400 cars. The maximum parking demand for the Chevy Chase Country Club, when at the peak hour, is 230 parking spaces. And assuming that there's 230 cars, will be parked at any moment in time. And that's only at a two-hour window. Before or after those two hours, there will be a less number of cars parked there, so the valet operator will handle that. As far as traffic is concerned, accessing Chevy Chase Country Club, there's some topography issues that would have to be addressed. Putting a driveway on Chevy Chase Canyon to have an emergency driveway or a secondary temporary driveway is very difficult, again, because on Chevy Chase, you have a little bit of a higher speed, and just putting an uncontrolled driveway on Chevy Chase for somebody coming out of that, a grassy area wants to make a left turn, you definitely need to have at least a 300 to 400 feet side distance. It will, I will not recommend it. I don't think the city staff will recommend it. So it's better to have it at a controlled intersection of Chevy Chase and Country Club so that access can be done. Everybody comes to a stop, makes a right turn, and goes in. In fact, I think it's a good idea that the access to the Chevy Chase Country, it's lower to the, closer to the Chevy Chase because now the traffic doesn't have to go through the canyon and country club farther up where, I'm sorry, where the residential is. So they will come in and they will exit. As part of the valet plan, we'll definitely make sure that there is, the valet operator will handle the access to and from the country club at night when everybody generally wants to exit at the same time if an event is over. You're talking about maybe 120 cars, and they can do it on an orderly basis because the valet cars, people will get into the car one by one, and they will exit. So we don't think that's going to be generating any safety issue at the intersection, and I think we can work with the architect, making sure that the driveway radius is such that it makes it a little bit easier to enter the country club. So I thought, I wanted to kind of capture all the issues that came up if I address your questions.
Commissioner Lee? Thank you. Well, I think valet service is a good mitigating measure. I think that will control it. Maybe this, you know, might be addressed to our engineers, too. Have we considered if, you know, if all that is really hardship and is difficult to do, maybe perhaps considering putting a speed bump?
Speed bump?
To reduce, you know, speed around, you know, as people exit. You know, you've got so many people going in and out of the Chevy Chase during the time where, when they're approaching the country club from, either from, you know, south side or north side, you know, that put a speed bump there to just, you know, cause people to slow down, that there's, you know, there's an area to be cautioned.
That is certainly a consideration. When you put in speed bumps on any residential street, especially in this case, country club, the fire department has a lot of concern in terms of slowing them down in case of emergency, especially if it's, you know, Chevy, country club is not a wide, you know, street, so obviously they will have a concern if it will impact them as they go further up on country club. But that is a consideration. It can be looked at in conjunction with the city staff, city traffic engineer, and look at it. Now, that can always be added. You don't need to do it right up front. You can always add that if it becomes an issue in terms of approach speed to the driveway and causes any safety issues.
Is valet service part of this proposal? I may miss that.
Yeah, we need to, the applicant and I, Art, well, I'm sure can address it further, but it is a complimentary valet service because they want to have a high-end operation, and especially when you have events, because of the parking, the way it's designed, you have two parking lots, one on the east side, one on the west side, so you definitely need to have a valet operation to drop off people at the porticoche right at the front, and then the valet parkers will park the car either on the east parking lot or the west side. So it is a complimentary service being offered with the operation of the Chevy Chase Country Club.
Mr. Dogg, is that part of the conditions?
That is the mitigation measure, I believe.
There is a mitigation measure to work out a valet plan. I don't think that the issue of cost has come, has floated to the top yet, whether it would be complimentary or not.
Any other questions for Mr. Bagdani? You may be, sir. Thank you. Mr. Foy, repeat what you just said. What the cost had anything to do...
I just, I said, I don't think that we've considered that issue yet.
You mean the valet plan?
No. No, whether it should be complimentary or not.
The complimentary valet.
We typically don't make that a requirement or a permit.
For the guests not to be charged?
Yeah, and the commission could recommend that condition of approval. It's not a typical one we do, but certainly within your discretion to recommend that to the city council.
And that's so the guests in full regalia would not go up and park on top of Chevy Chase and walk down in high heels to the banquet hall?
Mr. Chairman, I think the point is that valet service will be provided. The city really doesn't, the staff doesn't care if it's complimentary or...
The city really doesn't, the staff doesn't care if it's complimentary or whether it's ...
Very good. So if there are no other questions or clarifications from the staff, Mr. Foy, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to call the Commission's attention and the public's attention to the revised ordinance, and I want to, there are a couple of conditions of approval that have been slightly altered or added, which touch on some of the issues that have been raised here tonight. So the Commission can use these as a starting point for your discussions. And that is condition of approval number four, which says, "The tennis court shall be used during daylight hours only and shall not be illuminated." Condition number six says walkie-talkies or similar such communication devices shall be used by members of the valet service only when used with earpieces to control noise at any time that the valet service is in operation. Condition number 17 says, "All music or noise related to or emanating from use of the restaurant or banquet hall facilities shall be contained within the walls of the building where the entertainment or activity is to occur."
Mr. Foy, are these, I'm sorry to stop you, are these in your revised?
Yes, sir. "Activities on the property shall comply with all state and local laws and ordinances concerning excessive noise and disturbing the peace." The Commission may want to address noise emanating from the pool deck. You could say something like, "Any exterior music on the pool deck must not be audible at the property line." And the issue of having doors and windows open, that actually is a condition we often add, is that the doors shall remain closed during hours of operation. We didn't put it in here just, besides because we looked at the architectural plans and saw that there were no openings on the sides facing the residences. The Commission could suggest a condition that the windows must be non-operational, I suppose, but because there were no doors there, we didn't add that otherwise typical condition.
Any questions for Mr. Foy? So I'm going to be closing the public hearing, and we're going to start deliberations. Gentlemen, you have the floor.
I have an opportunity to visit the site Monday, and I am interested, actually, behind this project. I think it's about time that someone really renovate this place and make it into a community facility. And, you know, as the applicant have eloquently presented the modification, you know, I am really delighted to see that. I just want to make one comment, and I don't know if this comment will go to the council, but I do, I know that at some time I did have communication with Mr. Hagani, looking at this project, and that is that I don't think we went far enough in that, for this to be truly a functional, when someone invests so much money into this project, is to really have capability of the people who are using this facility to be able to overstay. That is not to say that we, you know, we need to have a hotel accommodation and things like that, but when there is a function to have meeting rooms and to invite people into the facility, there should have, should be some sort of a bungalow-type of a facility that will be able to accommodate these people. You know, we can put in the languages in there to restrict any other uses other than that, but I think that's something that I think should be considered. And, you know, hopefully, you know, if there's a way to do that, maybe become part of this package as well, so they're not have to come back a later date to request for something like that. But, so my opinion is that I don't think we went far enough with this project. Now, as far as these concerns that I heard tonight, and the rebuttal that I heard tonight, I am satisfied with the effort that was put in, so, and when all these concerns and the limitations are addressed in, as a conditions, I am fine with it. As far as the operating hours, I think I'm on the resident's side on that, you know, I think keeping the existing time of operating hours, I think is recommended. I think that's about it.
Commissioner Yussayyan.
Yeah, I've been up to the Chevy Chase Canyon area a number of occasions, and I really love it up there. It's really nice, and I think everybody who lives there is, I'm sure, feels very lucky. Trees, the privacy, and the noise, and I think noise is a big deal, because you could hear anything, you know, from a bird to a lawnmower. It really echoes throughout the canyon, so obviously, that is a concern that I'm sure everybody is very worried about. This Country Club is, it's a unique place in this canyon, and I guess it's called the jewel of the canyon for a reason. I hadn't been in a long time to this Country Club, but I got to visit on Monday, and the state of the building, I don't think meets the expectation or the quality of what a Country Club should be, and especially what residents would want. And it definitely looks like it needs an upgrade. I think the, you know, a lot of times when we have development projects come before us, it's unusual to see a meeting to have done, been done before with residents in the area, and to get support from also the association around there. So it's impressive to see that there was quite a bit of work done before we got here. Obviously, this is about 1,500 homes there, and probably, you know, there's still concerns there that, you know, that are, you know, continue, but it seems like a legitimate effort was done to get to this point, and I think that's good. The proposal, you know, I'm happy with how it's done within the existing footprint of the Country Club. It's not going outside of that. It seems like a reasonable addition to it compared to, you know, building a hotel or a giant banquet hall. And, and I'm pleased about the ways they've gone to try to reduce the noise in the area. So, you know, I'm supportive of this project. I think continuing the relationship with residents and the homeowners, and, you know, I heard one person say there was no contact number, and I'm sure the Country Club will make that available, or should make that available, so they can complain to them and not the police as a first basis. And I would be supportive of having a security condition in there to make sure, you know, it's as safe as possible for parties that, you know, would actually, you would need it. But, you know, I'm happy with this, and I think, I think it'll be a great amenity for the residents in that area, the pool, gym access, and a nice restaurant that they can go to.
Thank you, Commissioner Yussayyan. Commissioner Manoukian.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a great project, if only because, I think we all hear the footsteps of an oncoming development if the Country Club does not ultimately succeed. It's a great deal of open space that we got there. I think we're all stakeholders in making sure that this never succeeds. Although, for the life of me, I don't know what condition number 16, or where condition number 16 came from. No live entertainment, et cetera, et cetera. No bikini lingerie or swimwear activities or events, or any similar activities or events shall be allowed where such activity or event involves showcasing males or females for entertainment purposes.
It's like an MTV show.
Yes, so we know that that's not going to happen anymore. I'm very happy about this project. I hope that it succeeds. It behooves the ownership and management of the Country Club to work closely with the adjacent neighbors, because they're there 24/7. So that coordination, that relationship is very important. I would encourage every effort be made in that regard. I am favorable to the addition of the condition for the private security staff being on the premises. I do have a concern regarding the threshold that would require and necessitate such a, you know, such a private security staff, because I wouldn't want to create an onerous condition for the management, but I would do want a reasonable guideline. Does the staff have any language that they can think of that would speak to that?
Well, just off the top of my head, I, we probably would tie it to simultaneous use of the main assembly room, such as the two kind of meeting room or banquet halls, as well as the restaurant. Perhaps if they're all going at the same time, that's when a security service may be required. It's, I've seen other places where we've tried to tie it to expected attendance, and I don't know how anyone can predict their attendance. So it may be, that's just off the top of my head how I would first approach it.
In any event, we need to come up with something like that, so both our concerns are addressed while the management is not, is not unduly burdened. Beyond that, Mr. Chairman, again, very happy with the project. Hope that the management slash ownership and adjacent neighbors and homeowners association around the vicinity can work together and make this work, because, again, I would hate to see that much green, open space turn into a few dozen more single home residents.
Thank you, Commissioner Yussayyan. Now, before I...
Manoukian.
Commissioner Manoukian, I'm sorry, I was looking at you while addressing you.
I'll take it as a compliment. Remember that.
Thank you. And so, before I say what I have to say, let me ask a question. The hours of operation, are we all on the same page that 12 o'clock it is, or do we have, just not? In my opinion, the hours of operation should stay at 12 o'clock, if not for the entire period that your permit runs, but at least for one year. Let's see, on, that would be what I would suggest. Let's see how the club will operate and how the neighbors will be responding to it. And if there are no issues, then after that, the club should have the, the opportunity to be able to increase their time. Let's not forget, we're talking about a nine-hole golf course, and whichever way they can make this a go, they need to do it. So that would be my suggestion as far as the hours of operation are concerned.
So another added condition that would bring them back in a year for a revisit?
It's not a bringing back for revisit. This, I think, can be done administratively through the Planning Department Director. In other words, if they have not had any complaints, if the neighbors are cool with the whole thing, I think they should have the opportunity to go out in another hour to their operation. But that's a suggestion that I have. As far as the addition and the expansion of the club, this is not only justified, it's needed, it is about time, folks, seriously, because we have something that is of spectacular value in the city of Glendale, and it's a shame for it not to be utilized to its full extent. And I think what you have proposed, it's reasonable, and I think it will work quite well, hopefully. Security is an issue. I still am not sold on the issue of the traffic control, basically, and I don't know how that is going to be handled. I know that there is some valet provisions in the motion, but security, in my opinion, should not just be tied to numbers, Mr. Foy. In my opinion, if any one of those banquet halls are operational, whether it's a 2:00 meeting in the afternoon, or an 8:00 evening dance recital without bikinis, from what I gather, after, on number 16, that needs to be there. So it doesn't matter whether it's one of the banquet halls, or one of the meeting rooms, or both of them together. You know, for, for restaurant to be operational, I don't think I would require a security for a restaurant, but those two, if they're in operation, you do need the security. And of course, valet needs to be tied to that. So that would be my, those would be my recommendations and my observations. With that, we're ready to entertain a motion, if somebody is willing to make it.
May I just get a better sense of the Commission, Commission's intentions? When you say keep the, the club should be able to close at midnight, you referring to all the facilities? The banquet facilities, as well as the restaurant and the bar? The banquet facilities, as well as the restaurant and the bar? For the, for the closing hours?
No, I think, I think the restaurant and bar is the 10, and then the banquet is 12.
12, the 12 o'clock can and should be changed to 1:00 if there are no problems after 12 months of operation, is what I'm saying.
And then, can I assume that the other conditions that were voiced, if I didn't hear opposition to them, we will include them?
As a recommendation to the council, yes.
Yes.
I, yeah, I don't, I personally have concern about the administrative approval for the one-year midnight hour.
Mr. Hagani, you have something to say?
Well, let's, maybe you will not be as concerned after we explain what that means. Within a year, we will review the case and see if there have been any complaints or any disturbances, and if there are, we might require them to come before the Commission for, to amend this, and if there is no, no record of any disturbances, then it will continue as such. That would be the way to do it. In other words, we would put it like a threshold, that if a threshold has been reached and there is any kind of record of disturbances, then we would require them to come to the Commission for, to amend. There are two ways you could do it. We could, you could either ask them to come to the Commission to amend it if there is any record of disturbance, or you could direct staff to amend it with a fewer hours if there is a record of disturbance. And if there isn't, we could just continue allowing them to be open until midnight.
To midnight, but if there is an...
It's just that, yes, to require a public hearing just to review something is a little excessive. I think to require a public hearing, if there is any evidence of disturbance, that would make sense.
Yeah. So if there is an evidence of disturbance...
Disturbance, that then they...
Review if you want to bring it down, or if you want...
If you want to bring it down, if the...
Oh, I see.
But if you would like to authorize staff with specific directions after the year, if you would like to authorize staff to extend it, then you could do that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Lee.
Yeah, I want to ask Mr. Hagani, I know one of the comments, I don't know if you heard me or not, I wanted to see what the options would be. I don't know if other Commissions would go with it, but to actually, you know, go one step further and have this facility become a true community facility, when they have all these wonderful, you know, capabilities, to have a overstay capabilities, facilitating a bungalow-type of accommodations. What, what do you think, I mean, what is the steps that will be taken for that?
Since this is a PPD, the final design and the conditions that go before the council will be, will be part and partial of this particular approval. And if, in the future, they wanted to add extended stay capabilities, then necessarily they would have to come and request an amendment, which is an amendment to a zone change, which is a complete... is a complete zone change, which would, again, come back before the planning commission and would be reviewed and, and approved by council with a four-fifths vote.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Haganey, this is only in the event if they choose to extend their time. They may choose not to.
Correct.
If I may add, Chairman Astor and Commissioners, concerning the security concern, are you requesting that security personnel or security detail be provided during-
Acceptable.
Night events only?
No, no. Whenever your banquet halls-
Such as business meeting, or seminars, or-
Exactly. Whenever they are, whenever they are operational, security would be required.
Okay, so, all events within the banquet-
Uh, may we suggest a language to say commensurate with our requirements for other banquet halls?
Correct.
Because we have security requirements for banquet halls in their CUPs for their events, for the size of events. So, we will use the same measures that we use for any other banquet hall for security.
I'm happy I provided Dean Pittis for you for the clarification.
Thank you.
All right, so can we ask for, may I ask for a motion?
Okay, so in order to make a motion, what does one have to read? Are you sure?
With all the conditions.
All right, then. Mr. Chairman, I would move that upon consideration of the proposed ordinances relating to the expansion of Chevy Chase Country Club and a zoning map amendment, to allow a PPD overlay zone to be created within the boundaries of the Chevy Chase Country Club property of the SR zone, the planning commission hereby recommend that the city council adopt the proposed amendments to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, with all the conditions, as appear, which appear in the revised ordinance provided to us by the staff, as well as the additional conditions that Commissioners have read into the record, read into the record.
Thank you.
Second.
May please have a roll call.
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Manoukian.
Aye.
Yesaien.
Aye.
Chairperson Astorian.
Yes. Thank you, folks. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, we also need to have an environmental document.
No, 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 I'm sorry. The environmental document is under public review period right now. We do need to have a recommendation from the commission on the SR development review, which is sort of the design review for the SR zone. So, if you, if you're satisfied with the architecture of the project and the site planning-
We are supposed to do that?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, at least because it's close to the-
Special recreation.
So, is there a document that we have to read it, or do we just make up something to say, or how does that go?
You can recommend approval of the-
SR development.
The, rather, we did include the-
I did not.
Okay, all right.
I can simply say that the planning commission recommends to the city council the approval of the proposed SR development of Chevy Chase Country Club, including its expansion.
I second that motion.
Roll call. Uh, what was the motion?
Sorry, you're moving it?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we recommend to the city council that it adopt the special-
Recreation, development plan.
The special recreational development plan of the Chevy Chase Country Club.
Second?
Second.
May, may we please have a roll call?
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Manoukian.
Aye.
Yesaien.
Aye.
Chairperson Astorian.
Yes. Thank you. Folks, thank you for coming. Enjoy the rest of the evening. What's next? Actually, next is item number B, so you want to take a minute, one minute, or two-minute recess, please?
Maybe it's, it's good time for you to-
Are we on, Ms. Thompson?
Not yet.
You're going to take both of them?
Okay, we're on. Now, we're on. We're live now.
We're on. Okay, so, still under new business, item number B, Code Amendment Case Number PZC 1420793, Glendale Municipal Code Amendment Title 30, and we have from staff, Ms. Kristin Asp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Back in July of last year, the City Council initiated amendments to Title 30 to change the review authority of discretionary permits in the San Fernando Road Corridor Redevelopment Project area. Currently, design review of buildings or structures over 10,000 square feet in any redevelopment project area, we have two, we have the San Fernando Road Corridor and the Central Redevelopment Project area, is evaluated by the City Council instead of the Design Review Board. The City Council also reviews conditional use permits, variances, and parking reductions when associated design review, with associated design review applications. In the rest of the city, design review is evaluated by either Director of Community Development or the Design Review Board. Other discretionary permits, like an administrative use permit, a conditional use permit, and variances, are evaluated by either the Planning Hearing Officer, or the Director of Community Development, or the Planning Commission in the case of use variances. When a project requires a conditional use permit and the Design Review Board, both those review bodies evaluate the project at separate public hearings. This proposal would modify all discretionary projects within the corridor, consistent with all the other areas of the city outside of redevelopment project areas. Transferring the review authority back to the Design Review Board gives the Board the ability to make use of their specific design knowledge, and it would also offer greater processing consistency with the majority of the city, provide additional opportunities for public input, and returns the ability of the appeal process, something that's not currently available when City Council has the review authority. And based on that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council to adopt the proposed amendments, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Asp?
So, basically, this gives staff more discretion, well, gives the discretion to the staff for review as opposed to the City Council, right? This brings down decision-making.
It brings down decision-making to the appropriate bodies, whether that be the Planning Commission, the Design Review Board, the Planning Hearing Officer, or in some cases, staff.
Okay. I'm ready to make a motion.
Please, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council adopt the proposed ordinance to amend the Glendale Municipal Code related to zoning code amendment case number PZC 1420793 relating to changing the review authority of discretionary permits in the San Fernando Road Corridor Redevelopment Project area.
I do have one question, sorry.
Let's, there is a motion, if you want to second it, then we can discuss it, I guess, right?
Okay. I'll second it, but I do want to...
Very good, go ahead.
Does this also bring the review authority to the Planning Commission? Or is it just Design Review Board?
It focuses on Design Review Board, but actually, there is a way in which some cases could come to the Planning Commission, because right now, if there's a variance and a project which requires a design approval, the variance itself goes to the City Council. So if the design approval goes down to the Design Review Board, then the variance would go to the Hearing Officer with an appeal to the Planning Commission potentially. So, yeah, there could be a little bit more in your orbit in the future.
So, I mean, I would like to recommend that, I mean, since we're trying to make it consistent with the overall city with Design Review Board, to make it consistent with the Planning Commission review authority as well.
I believe how Mr. Foy described it would make it consistent with the Planning Commission authority elsewhere.
It does?
It does, yes.
Okay. So this does, so it's for variance cases and also Design Review Board?
Use variances would come to you, like they do today, for anything else, but other variances that would, standard variances which would go to the Hearing Officer will continue going to the Hearing Officer.
And then if it gets appealed, it can come?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead. So that would be the change from how it's done right now? Okay, good.
May please have a roll call.
Planning Commissioners, Manukian.
Aye.
Yes, Ayen.
Aye.
Chairperson, historian.
Yes. Thank you. The next item is item number C on their new business, Glendale Amendment Case Number PZC 1501909, Glendale Municipal Code Amendment Title 8, 15 and 30, and it's in regards for the entire city, I think Mr. Bagdikian will be our planner on this. Mr. Bagdikian, we are ready when you are.
Yes, give me one second. Yes, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners, this is an amendment to Titles 15 and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, primarily focusing on Title 30 amendments. They consist of miscellaneous changes, a lot of them are cleanup items or making different code sections consistent with each other. Initially, we advertised also Title 8, but subsequently, the Title 8 item got pulled for a subsequent amendment later on. I distributed a one-page modification to the ordinance, to the draft ordinance, and let me explain what that is. That's the first item in the draft ordinance, and it's amending section 15 dot 20 dot 060, and affecting the public noticing for the designation of historic properties. The amendment that I handed out deletes the first part of the strikeout sentence in the draft ordinance, so it deletes basically the posting of the property and the mailing of public notices for the designation of historic properties. This is the first item in the ordinance. In the past, we haven't had participation from the mailing or otherwise regarding the designation of historic properties. That's why the, this part of the public noticing is being, is proposed to be deleted. The Planning Commission does not have jurisdiction over this, but it's included as an information item. Eventually, the City Council will be reviewing and voting on this. The remaining...
I'm sorry, but you're referring to section 15.20, right? That we don't have?
Yes.
Jurisdictional.
The jurisdiction over.
Yes, Title 15 altogether.
And so, why is it here?
Because it will be eventually presented to the City Council as one ordinance.
Okay, because on your first, well, let's finish your presentation, then I'll ask.
The remaining parts of this ordinance relate to various variants, various sections of the zoning code. Let me cover a couple of them. Section 30.11.070 relates to the requirement of railing associated with ramps or stairways in residential yards, and it makes these sections consistent across the residential code. The next one, section 30.15.020, in the past, when we rearranged or reformatted the land uses in the zoning code, certain uses got mistakenly deleted from the SR zone. When the SR zone got split, certain land uses in the SR zone, the recreation types of uses got split between land uses or permitted uses in a public park versus in a private setting. So this restores back the uses that got mistakenly deleted. Section 30.15.040 clarifies that in the SR zone, a PPD overlay application is subject to council's decision with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The way it's worded now, anything in the SR zone is subject to Planning Commission approval, but a PPD zone change overlay must be approved by the City Council, not the Planning Commission.
So what would the change do?
A PPD, a precise plan of development is a zone change, basically, and zone changes get approved by the City Council. So when a precise plan of development occurs in an SR zone, in an SR zone, normally, the Planning Commission has a decision authority unless the precise plan of design overlay zone.
Like what just happened tonight.
Exactly. So this clarifies that in a situation like that, the City Council is the decision authority.
We are the recommenders.
Yeah. It's how it is now, too.
Yes, but this is a clarification that you're adding. See what's next. Section 30.40.040, it extends the discretion of the Planning, Community Development Director to combine applications. This was recently done for Title 30 applications, but we had an interpretation that applied to Title 16, which is a subdivision section, which is a subdivision title. So this formally extends the Director's authority to combine applications that involve a Title 30 application under Title 30 and an application under Title 16. And the combined review is at the higher level. And the last item on this is section 30.61.010, and this has led to some confusion in the past, and it clarifies that design review applications, the noticing for design review applications are not to be published in a newspaper, similar to variances or other zoning This has been in the code, but it has led to some confusion because due to wording, and this clarifies the wording. Having said this, I would like to conclude my presentation unless there are questions from the Commission.
Gentlemen?
You had me at hello.
I have a, I do have a question for you, and maybe it's more like a clarification than a question. In your background, on third line, in parenthesis, you state that amendments to titles other than Title 30 do not require council initiation, Planning Commission.
Right.
And then, in the summary, we include Title 15, which is certainly other than Title 30. Can you tell me, if this doesn't require a Planning Commission initiation or City Council initiation, why is it in front of our at least 15.20.060?
It is for information purposes, and it would be helpful for the Council to hear what the Planning Commission thinks on it, about this item, but the Council does not need a formal recommendation from the Planning Commission on Title 15 items.
Okay, on the same, in the same vein with the same subject, we are saying that the designation of historic properties are owner-initiated and have no bearing on neighboring properties. My, and either one of you, anyone can answer this. Now, I do know that if we have a historic asset, a next door to it wants to develop, rehab, add, paint, do whatever it is, they need to be sensitive to that historic asset. How is this section here taking that into account? For example, when you're not noticing, if somebody owns property next to a historic asset, doesn't get a notice that his, its neighbor is becoming historical, and that could have ramifications for them for future potential development, rehab, addition, or what have you. How are we addressing that?
I see your point. I guess I would, what it makes me think of is that it can be that a development adjacent to a historic property could affect the historic value of the property if the historic property's setting becomes, if its historic importance is partially due to its setting, and that setting is so altered that it loses its historical value. I would say that's a pretty rare occurrence. Yeah, it might happen, say, at the juncture of a residential in a commercial zone. I don't think we've, I've ever seen a case like that in Glendale. Well, this is not about districts.
I know, but it could go.
Actually, I heard a word that I would like to talk about. So, and my point is conceptual, okay? So take a step back. We got a number of neighbors living in a specific part of the town, the city, wanting to designate their neighborhood as a historical district. What they do is they identify a number of houses that fall within a certain category that they deem appropriate for their purposes. They come to the city, they apply to have a particular, their neighborhood designated as a historical neighborhood. Let's speak, for example, what is that, Royal by Mountain? That corridor that goes up with the 100-year-old pont? Okay. So a neighborhood, members of a neighborhood go through a process, get their neighborhood designated, identify certain houses, they before, after consulting with you and going through the process with you, they appear in front of us, and we green light, not green light, we approve it, right? That's what we do.
You recommend approval.
We recommend it. Now, that's the process as is. Now, so let's consider the accuracy of this statement. The designation of historic properties are owner-initiated and have no bearing on neighboring properties. Now I question that statement in light of the process that is in place here, because when you say bearing, okay, you're not talking in terms of property value or the safety and security or any of that. It's just bearing. It is such a general term that I would have to defer with you that it does have a bearing. By definition, if me and my neighbors went through the headache of designating our neighborhood historical, identifying certain properties as historic, and going through the process, therefore, somebody wanting to drop out of the program later on down the line will have some sort of bearing on us, right?
Okay, yeah.
Again, I am, I just want to reconcile these two things.
And so, Commissioner Manukian brought it to fruition, so to say, as far as the residential end is concerned. My concern was really on the commercial end. When you have, in a commercial district, the property is designated or being designated or initiated by the owner to become a historical asset, and you've got properties that are next to it, and now, whether you like it or not, the properties next to it in future, if they want to do something, they have to be sensitive to this one. So what I'm saying, at the very minimum, they need to be noticed, is where I'm headed with, as opposed to not being noticed around it. So those are my concerns.
Okay, I just for a point of clarification, and maybe we should have emphasized this better. This refers to properties, this Title 15 deals with properties only on the Glendale Register. It has absolutely nothing to do with historic districts. Those are handled in the zoning code Title 30. So what we're talking about here is just the designation of an individual property.
Okay.
So I just, I just want to clarify that for the record.
That's fine. I mean, that still doesn't answer or...
Yeah, I'm going to go to Mr. Manukian's concerns.
Sure, thank you. Did you have anything that you want to add?
No, I actually understand your concern, and I really do not have a solution for it. However, the only thing that I could say that may, to a certain extent, address it is that whether or not a structure is designated historic, we will pretty much treat them the same way, and that is really, once something is designated historic, it's for sure that we're going to treat them a particular way, the set of ways that we have put in place. However, even potentially historic buildings are treated as historic, the way that we do everything about them, and that's just the nature of the way that it works out in the planning practice. So if you're adjacent to a building that could be potentially historic, it's the same as being adjacent to a building that's a designated historic building. The difference is minimal, really, in the way that they are treated in terms of our design review and in terms of our review of everything that happens to them.
You see, my concern is not just that property that is historic or near historic. My concern is the limitation in future that it will bring up or impose on the adjacent or neighboring properties. If the neighboring property wants to rehab, add, do whatever it is that they need to do.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm asking for noticing to still continue on it.
Okay, I would also add that we have had a couple of cases in commercial districts...
Yeah, I know.
Can they finish? Where we, there was a property next to a historic property, and we did not take them before the Historic Preservation Commission, even though perhaps some people in the historic community might have advocated for that, but we drew the line that they're not a historic property, they're not going to go before HPC. As I said earlier, it'd be extremely rare for a development on an adjacent property to affect the setting of an individual historic property so much that it would cause a historic, historically designated property to lose its historic value. But having said that, I understand your concerns, and your point is well taken.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah, we will forward your, we'll think about it, and we'll forward your concerns to the City Council.
Thank you.
It was brought up because I imagine for efficiency reasons to...
Yeah, it was brought up because in my 11 years here, I don't think we've ever had anyone come to speak at the designation of a historic property, as an individual historic property, who, well, it's very rare for anyone besides the owner to speak, not a thing I've ever heard anyone speak in opposition.
Okay. Again, at this point, we're talking about how many angels can dance on the head of a needle, but let me give you an example. So there's that, that brick building next to the Bank of America, the Jack's Bar, that hotel, next to Bank of America on Brand and, what is it?
It's Brandon Langsington.
Langsington, right? So conceivably, that could be designated as a historical, let's say for the sake of argument. So I'm the owner of that, that building, and I want to designate it as a historical building. The owner of the Bank of America next door doesn't want that to happen. Why? Because maybe one day they want to sell that building and build a higher, a high-rise on that site, okay? But when we give permission to do that, right, when they come in front of us, what is one of the conditions that we, we always impose on them? To make sure that no vibration happens when they are removing soil, right? Such that it may affect their neighbors. Now, the owner of the Bank of America lot can say, well, if you designate this as a historical building, now you're actually increasing my liability should I ever want to build a high-rise on my property. I know it's really academic, but it is possible, but...
Anyways, I think, please do consider it.
We could just recommend to continue the way it is.
Very good. With that, I don't have any further comments or questions. Any other questions, comments from Mr. Bagdikian?
No.
No? So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council adopt the proposed ordinance to amend the Glendale Municipal Code relating to zoning code amendment case number PZC 1501909.
Mr. Yusayen, can we...
Second.
Thank you, and roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners, Manukian.
Aye.
Yes, Ayen.
Aye.
Chairperson, historian.
Yes, thank you. And so the next item in front of us will be Code Amendment Case Number PZC 15, is it 1502311? Mr. Bagdikian?
That's me.
Laura Stotler? Right, so Ms. Stotler. And this is in regards to Glendale Municipal Code Amendment Title Number 30, location is citywide. Ms. Stotler, please go ahead.
Yes, this item, the project description is amendments to Title 30 relating to the city's reasonable accommodation process, and we are at this time proposing to establish permanent procedures for expiration, time extension, violation, discontinuance, and revocation of permits related to reasonable accommodation for individuals with disability. Back in 2009, the city adopted a procedure for granting reasonable accommodations for persons with disability, and we've included those as part of chapter 30.52 in our municipal code. However, our current procedures do not address revocation of a grant for reasonable accommodation before it is constructed. So in December 2015, council adopted interim process, and so now what is before you is a request to make that a permanent process. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to amend three different sections of Title 30, title, chapter 30.41 would establish that a reasonable accommodation request runs with the individual who received the reasonable accommodation, not with the land. Chapter 30.52, it has several amendments, but basically, it includes identifying findings consistent with the purpose of a reasonable accommodation. And then, reasonable accommodation grants, which did include this, and they would be subject to the same appeal procedures, just as we have for other entitlements. That actually is already in our code. But then the other amendment we're proposing is to chapter 30.64. That provides a procedure for revocation of a reasonable accommodation grant, and you can see that it mirrors the process that we have for other planning entitlements. And so with that, that's kind of a quick overview. It's basically to bring a reasonable accommodation procedures into alignment with other entitlement processes that we have. This project is exempt from SEQA. This ordinance has been reviewed by the City Attorney's Office, and therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend the council adopt this ordinance. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Stotler. Any questions for Ms. Stotler? None. I have one observation and one question here. On your page two, under chapter 30.4 relating to permit implementation, time and extensions, basically what we're doing is tying this to tenancy as opposed to running it with land, correct?
Yes.
And we are using the words cessation of use, removal of reasonable accommodations. So if somebody had to put a semi-elevator, would they have to take that out? No?
None.
Okay. Reasonable.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, this refers to items that are not so structurally integrated into the building, such as the elevator that you've described, but things that could be removed would be, for example, railings or ramps on the exterior of the property when the individual with a disability no longer resides there, and it encroaches into, the reasonable accommodation is, for example, an encroachment into a setback area that otherwise would not have been requested or permitted but for the need to accommodate.
President. Are we ready for a motion, Commissioners? Commissioner Yusayen?
Move that upon consideration of the proposed ordinance, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said amending sections of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code relating to reasonable accommodation procedures, the Planning Commission hereby recommends the City Council adopt the ordinance, amending reasonable accommodation procedures.
I second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners, Manukian.
Aye.
Yes, Ayen.
Aye.
Chairperson, Astorian.
Yes. Thank you. With that, we're going to go to our number, item number eight. Are there any Community Development Department updates? Seeing none, hearing none. Comments from Commissioners? No comments. All right, and with that, I will adjourn. I will not adjourn.
I would like to wish everyone.